Fair enough, Madam Auditor, would you oblige us with the reading of the minutes?
You bet. June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM. With Ty Rosberg, Chairman Presiding, members present were Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board recognized the change of status for Alex Harm, shop assistant engineer's office. Taya Binami, Director of Recovery Center, had a discussion with the Board about services they offer, and areas they could offer more assistance with the help of opioid settlement funding. No action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to increase the credit card limit to twenty-five thousand for Hickams. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the City Center IT room. Construction RFP timeline to July seventeenth. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Schultz, to approve the hail damage quo for the damaged condenser coils. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned. Eleven forty-seven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM proceeding.
Thank you, Madam. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? None, no standard red. Wrong color.
That's all right. Oh, unless it's red.
No. There you are, ma'am. Ignore the extra chicken scratch there. My pen was bleeding. Okay, Supervisor's report. Jean, would you care to start us off this morning?
I will. And I'll keep it short a little bit. I did have a conversation with a few of the members on the public health. And so we're ready to begin working. And it still appears to me that the biggest issue we have right now is that water line that goes above Jake's room. So what I need to know, and I need to know how to find out, what we can do with that? Because the sinks upstairs are dependent on where that water line goes, or what they're gonna do with that water line. And until we get that figured out, we can't really go forward with another RFP for ourselves. Because is Jake taking care of the water line, or are we?
I'm not seeing his RFP, so I have no idea.
I thought he had something about the water line in there.
So he, so the question is, is he going to move that?
Yeah, I think so.
The question would be, the sinks on that side of the building, will that affect them? Because we're planning on leaving them.
Is there anything right over his, where his area is?
If I, not one with the sink. That kind of gets to those offices where they were actually offices with no sink there.
So if we wrap that around that room, bring pipe out and around, that shouldn't suffice?
Is that the plan then?
Yeah, I think that should be.
Because we're okay, you know, just, not all of us together, but just kind of visited separately with a few of them, that we're okay with leaving those little sinks in those current offices to not have to go through all the expense of changing out, you know, the plumbing. And what the big problem's gonna be is magic up the floor and then the baseboard and drywall, and that's where some expense comes. And since the ARCA funds were originally designed for, if we have another pandemic, it makes no sense to take out water.
When was the last time you went to the doctor's office? He didn't wash his hands, but he came in and went on?
Yeah, they always want to do that. So I just feel there's enough offices without the little sinks that the gals, that wouldn't be out. They can maybe re- pay, however they do it. So we're really, really ready to look forward. The problem with waiting is the outside starting to look like a vacant building. We really need to address the windowsill, and that concrete isn't getting any better. If we don't get this done, we're gonna miss that window of good weather to get those outside things done. And so we just really need to get it off the mark. And I think that what our, what we should do is get it on the agenda to actually move those funds into a special line item and let the Public Health Board kind of just-
The Board itself.
The Board itself, instead of us trying to dictate what they need to do.
I agree a hundred percent with that. And I said this all along there. Like, my wife said the Manning Library. It wasn't the city council that dictated all the changes.
You haven't said that all along.
It was the library board itself and the city council said, here's the funds we have available. We should be the same way. Here's the funds we have available, here's the amount.
So I'd like to get that-
That was our problem at first, is we've got to look spend heavy with who we did have, so I think if we set-
But here's, here's the amount.
I think that we should put it on the agenda for next week and be prepared to-
And you're on that board, so we've got to say on it. So that's one, another clause to have.
According to the email Terry sent us with the ARCA funds now is moving out.
We have a hundred fifty set aside right now. And with, that should be plenty for the things that are gonna need to get done. Most expensive is gonna be reconfiguring the door in that bathroom and making that handicap accessible. That's where a little bit of-
Concrete.
And concrete, that's gonna be about forty thousand to get that wall down and get that ramp for the handicap. And then the door is gonna be a little bit expensive. We can, I think, start with that to see how far we can get with those funds, but at least get things going and get the RFP the way they want it with those funds and just get it moving so we don't miss a window of good weather.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
So that is-
Anybody got objections to that?
So we get it on the agenda?
Let's put it on the agenda.
And then I want to kind of wonder where we're going with this HR one source. I hate to just kind of-
Can I step back?
Yes, absolutely.
Not to sum things up, but for setting up a special fund, make this smart, Terry caution. We need to use that, or we just need to-
I don't think you need to move the money. I just think you need to designate what you're allowing for that project.
And so they can withdraw as they need.
Right. Well, they just submit their claims.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I just wanted to clarify that.
So we don't really need to have it on the agenda then?
Well, no, I think you do. I think you need to officially designate what you're-
Right, authorizing them to-
Up to a hundred fifty.
All right, so I just think it's just-
One thing I was thinking about while I was here. So we're gonna authorize them whatever now. There don't need to be stipulations that that can't all just go upstairs for new carpet, new paint.
Right.
And then leave our base, the lower level, still shambles.
I, I wouldn't give it all to them for the upstairs.
And that's an advantage of having Jean on that board now.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, is they-
That's fine. Yeah, I think we kind of talked about that months ago, and-
Our conscience actually sits on that board now with her.
Yeah, which makes me-
Yep. That's a great point.
I just want to keep that moving.
But you don't want to spend a hundred fifty upstairs, and then have them come back and say, hey, we need another two hundred for downstairs.
Because of the hundred and fifty, that doesn't count Jake's.
Downstairs isn't theirs.
That's, that's part of my thought process here. They say, well, that's your guys' baby, not ours.
I mean, we have two places that we have the house down there.
A little bit, and that's where it's been tangled up. So we need direction on the public board, on exactly.
Put it on the agenda, but maybe we dial that number down to say-
Okay.
Start out at a hundred.
Yeah.
I'm absolutely at your mercy, what-
Well, I'm just throwing these out, suggesting, oh, let's pull it down to a hundred or something, and say, hey, get your upstairs done. A hundred thousand, to me, would be-
That ought to be plenty.
Is Jake, is Jake's, are we doing Jake's, Jake's little cell, or separate?
Yeah, yeah, that's separate. That's why we kind of had the topic.
The public health's gonna remodel the upstairs and the downstairs.
Then they can have honorability?
I mean, that's, how do you do that? Because, because you just, with the contractors, you might have a contractor that's coming to say, yeah, I'll do the whole thing, but-
I agree with that, and I think-
Well, the funds available for it, but you want to hear that and know that first before you commit the money.
And I might have had somebody tell me what they would do the whole thing for, and it was a big number. But it was the whole thing.
Bigger than our one fifty.
Yes.
But as we seen last weekend in the shop files, there's always somebody that has a really big number, and then there's always somebody that will do it for. So they keep their legs on.
Did you do the concrete outside?
The estimate was, yeah. Yeah, because it's not a very large, that was the city doing their outlet, so it wasn't.
Right.
Maybe if we put it on the agenda next week, it'd be nice to have Doug or another member, or someone over here to say, hey, here's our intention.
Yep, Marcy was-
Marcy, don't, don't leave the basement unattended.
Yep, yep, yep.
Before we approve it.
I'll talk to them and see if they can make it. Because I, I just, it's gonna be something we talk about every week until it's done. Ribbon cutting has to happen before the snow lies. So that is that. And then I did talk to Steve.
Your question answered on HR one. I see you just buried it.
Oh. I just want to make sure that we're, we didn't have a one and done on this, that we had the presentation and had some pushback, and then we don't do anything. I did-
I, I, I like the idea of getting a, I mean, even, even if we don't, in the end, apply everything is having a job description slash-
Jack can do some of that stuff though.
You think so? And the comparative?
Well, not the comparative, but if you're looking for job descriptions.
Would he actually interview the, the employees?
Jack, no.
Or do you just, because what, what I, okay, so we have a job description that says you do this, this, and that. But is that really what they still do, or have those switched around a little bit to where?
I'm sure they change all the time.
Well, and I don't care which way we go, but I did speak to a former board member, and they said for years, that's always been an issue. And they just think that that would be great if we finally got that done. So that we, whether it's good or bad, see, we're going into a little bit of a crap shoot on, we don't know if they're gonna say everybody's historically underpaid.
I like the comparison thing to get rid of that historically underpaid.
I like that too. And I think once and for all, then we know, and you know, from day one, it, it seemed hard for me to decide what someone should be making when I don't even really know what they do, you know? And I, and they leave that up to us, and everybody compares constantly to this person gets this much, and I only get this much. But are you guys doing the same things? And I like the idea of the responsibilities of what they have, the compensating factors. Lays it out, whether you need a degree of any sort, whether you, with your education experience, if you supervise people. Those are all factors that we need to take into effect when you're deciding.
Well, I, I, can I?
Thank you.
I would like to bring up one thing about this. I mean, it, it is the elected official's responsibility and duties to run their department. And nobody argues that.
Nobody does.
We're basically oversight.
Correct.
And especially when you have somebody new like Sarah to be that oversight, as she's acclimating herself to her new position. I don't, if, if we have the reference materials, and that's the same ones that they're using on what people are and what they should be appropriately compensated, I think that they, they should still do their job. And if, if they, if we see something that's out of line, pointing fingers in a specific direction here, then we can bring them in in front of the, the all-wise owl so that they can explain their position. And then it's, then it's on record of why they did it. And good is good, and questionable will be, have to be answered to. So I, I think that that's why this would be probably a good thing.
And I think that, you know, starting to take money out of line items and giving it to employees, if you have a little extra, is, is going down a path that I don't think we've ever gone down before in the courthouse ever. Taking money out of, you know, juvenile detention.
I've been for about five years now.
Recently it's happened.
Yeah, I just feel that it starts precedence a little bit if you have an employee that you really like. And you know, the scenario was given to me that you have, and the way that, you know, because, because the, the, how it gets determined is the people vote. So you give a raise, and if people don't agree, they don't vote in. Let's just say you don't want to run again, and you don't have any plans of giving vote, and you have this galler guy that's working for you. You just want to give them some more money. So on your way out the door, if you give them a little bit more, what goes up never comes back down, and-
Well, and that's with the elected official, Jean. So I mean, but, but if, if we, we also got to keep in mind that the departments that have a board that, that just determines that, but it's not an elected board, it's an appointed board by this table. So that actually is our way of monitoring those type of things too. So I, I'm just trying to throw that in so we don't leave that part out.
Think of all the, the, the different avenues that we can all go down. But I just think knowing what the job, the value of the job is kind of, you know, from a supervisor in Iowa City, what she liked about it is they put a value on the job, you know, so you kind of know what that job pays. Instead of moving target constantly, and as you go off the door, you can give everyone a raise because you had extra money in your-
Mr. Mulbauer has a question.
Or here's kind of a thought, more, again, here's where I'm at. I'm with you a hundred percent, Jean. I, I feel like Paul and HR one could really clear the muddy waters of what's fair compensation for employees. Here's my sticking point, while I'm on the fence. We could go through this and say, spend the twenty, twenty-five thousand to do this study. Realize we have some employees underpaid, some employees maybe over. But looking forward, we have been very conservative with our budget because of how weary we are of our revenue going down the road of credits, exemptions, rollbacks, things that are gonna hit us from state legislation that could affect our bottom line of revenue coming in. And we couldn't afford to bump them up to what maybe they need to be at. And then to me, it's a waste of money because you can't do, so like, how then, so you do nothing with that. Spent twenty-five grand to realize we're underpaid employees, and we, budget-wise, can't get them to where they should be.
That is the scary part.
And if you dip into your general fund, it won't last long. How many years dipping into your general fund cover wage increases when you don't have it to offset with the new growth in our revenue?
Yeah, probably one.
Yeah, I, I, so either, you know, so the talking point on this would be, we have to decide if it's something we want to do or not. And I just hate to have kind of everybody wondering if we're gonna do it or not. I'd like to have us all kind of think about going forward if it's something we're-
That's a great point, Dave. I think we need to, you know, probably just do one on a little bit.
Wouldn't it be prudent, I guess, to, how many counties does Jack work with? I mean, does Jack work with any counties that are doing that, to see what he has had from past experience, and what his thought is?
He gave us some of the counties that he worked with, and one that stuck out to me was Johnson County in Iowa City. And that's why I did reach out to one of their supervisors to see how they liked him. But reminding you that that is a lot bigger county, and we have an actual HR department and assistants and secretaries and all sorts of people. And they found it, you know, very beneficial. But also, you know, you have, even if you find out that there was an elected official's office that's overstaffed, there's nothing we can do about it, you know? So, so there are some, you know-
You're wrong there.
You're wrong? I like to be wrong.
No, I don't, I don't mean it that way. I don't mean it to be disrespectful at all.
Oh, no, no.
But I think depending on how that office is staffed, if it's deputies, I do believe the Board of Supervisors gives to state. We can look at the code and find out for sure how many that you can have.
The other thing that a lot of us assume that things are the way we've always done it, and that's the right way. And, you know, that's what I always hear, is well, that's why we've always done it. And then you kind of get digging in a little bit deeper, and it necessarily is just the way it got started. And it's not necessarily the only way, or even the right way, but it's just the way we've always done it. So those are some good points of it. I, if I had all the answers, I would, you know, but I just wanted to, to not let that pass. And then also, I kind of got Colin looking into the twenty-eight E part of the mental health, what, how that's gonna affect us. I will have my last mental health meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Your last voting meeting?
My last voting meeting. But I kind of, I, I need to find out how they ended up appointing an at-large member, you know? I kind of looked at all over again, and-
You know, they go just handpicked by Dawn?
They got a, they got an at-large, and that's Carol, at-large. So they've got their, their forty-nine percent of the counties, and then they have an at-large. And I'm feeling like they have Carol sitting there. They can come if somebody else can't come. But I'm kind of trying to find out if that's really the way that was intended. So Stephen said I could come down to the voting if I wanted to and kind of meet with the group and express my concerns. One of the concerns that came up to me is, you know, we had that nice presentation from the Manning. Why aren't we taking people there rather than shipping them up to Sioux City?
Right.
It's so close and has all the, and why aren't they being funded? Why aren't they part of our region? What has gone wrong there?
I told you that.
You did.
Our CEO at MRCH has reached out to our rolling hills and had her crickets.
Well, I'm trying to get to the bottom of that too, because it would be so much easier if that was one of the places that we could take. You know, they have, work with gambling and alcohol and drug, and seem to have every program that seems to be lacking that I've been concerned about. And it's just, you know, so close, and so I'm trying to follow up a little bit on that.
That's me, Jean. I still feel like a four or five or six county region in our area that could provide, if we weren't so bogged down with what we had provided by the core services, we have lose things like stepping stones and veil. All, and right now, the system is send it all to Sioux City.
Sioux City, and then you-
Leave us here, making out here in rural Iowa.
I still have my email of how irrelevant it was.
But you can be an advisor now.
Well, that'll be fun. I look forward to just being able to give my opinion, but they can just say, thank you. But it's okay. But I'm, I'm following up on that. I just really want to make sure that we don't lose our voice completely.
I appreciate that.
And see what we can do. And I did kind of ask him to look into, you know, if we pull out of the region, you know, what can we create our own? But we'd have to belong to a region somewhere that is in one of the contiguous counties around us, and there's not a whole lot to choose from. And, you know, I'd be in the same spot, you know, being, being a new county coming in, you're not, I don't have an employee of record. I don't know how they decided, but there's some questions too on if that employee of record decides to take another position. And then we, you know, to get somebody over here, Crawford County, that's our employee of record, do I then go on the board? And that person has to go off, or how does that all work? There seems to be, as usual, with the mental health, they, they cross that bridge when they get to it, probably, I'm not sure about it. So I'm digging in a little bit deeper on that, and Colin's looking into the twenty-eight E, and Dawn's group is looking into twenty-eight E. But if you remember last time, we signed them all, different counties had different perceptions of what that really meant. So still working on that. I'll report back next week.
Okay, clear up. Thank you. Mr. Mulbauer.
Well, a few things. I had a call last night, actually, Jody Mulbauer. She's trying to call back in for jury duty, was having problems.
Phones aren't working.
Phones aren't working. So I text her that, and I talked to, yeah, I talked to-
I suppose I gotta wait for somebody to get out of Georgia to come up there and fix them.
Joni and Bonnie, they said if anybody calls you and asks why they can't call into jury duty, tell them phones are down and that they're working on it, and hopefully it'll be up sooner than later to keep trying back. Wanted to bring up, Sherry sent us all the email about new CDL changes or testing, which could potentially have us lose our ability to issue CDLs and CDL testing, which I think would be a huge blow to Crawford County. And that's more near wheelhouse, Ty, but it's looking like we're gonna have to find a new site that meets the criteria. Which blows my mind, because we have a site that's worked for years.
And the big thing is, they have to be able to parallel part now. Because, you know, we do that daily.
I can't even parallel part my career.
I've done it, I've, you know, I've done it probably counted on two hands in thirty-five years, but you do do it. So I suspect that's the idea behind having to test for it, but you don't have to do it very often. And I, you know, to me, rewriting, I, you know, I, I know their numbers are testing are down because of the way the new schooling thing is done, you know, and even Sherry even mentioned that this morning, you know? But, but I don't know that, you know, you look at a guy like me, let's just say I did this here for another four terms or something, and I didn't, I let my CDL go, but then I decided, you know, as an eighty-year-old guy, I'd like to drive truck again. And I wanted to take the test, and I've got the, you know, experience and wisdom behind me. Being able to take it here at the courthouse would be a lot more efficient than having to go sign up for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar schooling. You know, if I can pass the damn test, I can pass the test.
Right.
So I think that from that aspect, in a time where our driver shortage is unparalleled, I just don't know that cutting out another avenue of drawing, being able to draw in at least hopefully qualified drivers in this sense. But you see what I'm getting at? I don't, I, I don't like the idea that there seem to be okay with shutting down some of these counties that are, have been willing to do it. And we've actually got, I mean, this is probably the first time in my life that I've ever, and Tammy probably has some trucking and knowledge because they got their own trucks, but you got two, two ladies over there testing that come from trucking families. I mean, they're husbands, you know, I mean, it's what they do. So I mean, they, they got the understanding of this. We actually got good testers per change, you know? I mean, obviously, you know, they gotta be certified by the state as well, but to me, that's, it's, now we're not gonna be able to take advantage of a, a good fortune, so.
Well, to me, that just even hurts our overall economy in Crawford County that much harder, because it's hard to find those drivers anyways. Now you're gonna potentially not even have a seat, testing site.
Yep, yeah, that's a great point. I, I agree. I, I'd like to be able to keep it.
What do we need to do?
You know, and they're just talking like it's a couple feet. To me, come and measure it out, see if it can be done, you know? Somebody can whip one in there, then shut up and move on.
So what do we need to do to, to really make sure that we-
That's gonna have to be a Sherry question, because I have no idea what her chain of command to deal with that is.
Don't you think we should make sure we're following up and having our voices heard, that we don't want to lose it, you know?
Yeah, I think she probably is.
She was reaching out here, I pursue DOT.
If she wants us to have something from the board, I'm fine with having something we have.
Maybe we should, that we're not going down easy.
Yeah.
Put in the response, you get on the email from that individual, state that it would be positive if the Board of Supervisors would act or do something, and you didn't really say what to do.
I think they want us to build a, build a new site, is what I think their, their act was.
More willing to write a letter.
Well, I mean, I, I would like to know why, if, if they're just talking a couple feet for our site, I mean, why, why can't we?
Should we get her in here and see what we can do and see if she, the email was-
We have time.
Or we can, whatever you want to do.
I don't have much, you know? What do you, what else do you got?
Uh, annual conference registration, hotels, I think that's already booked up, so if you're interested in going, looks like there's a good agenda in August.
For, for our August one?
Yeah.
I'll be on our phone.
So I've signed up. I sent you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. And so be interested.
Sign up.
Be a good one, sign up.
I'll sign up today.
You guys are good people, speaking, doing, good.
Always learn stuff.
I always learn it though. I like that.
Learn, sometimes you learn most just to have a coffee with a fellow supervisor.
No, that too, too.
Or an elected official, but you never-
I usually sit down at the table of the other ones. I haven't sat down at an auditor's table yet. They scare the hell out of me.
I have.
They should. Come to West Des Moines today, we'll have an R and S summer conference.
Are you really?
You are?
We are.
Good.
Had it there.
Okay, Mr. Dozart, what would you have for us, sir?
The only thing, I didn't have any meetings last week, but I did have some information that I thought you guys should be aware of. And one of it was just pertaining to the Crawford County Hunger Fighters. It's an organization we don't support, but they do do a lot of stuff at Crawford County, so I just wanted you to be aware. It's an organization that I support personally. Demand for the backpack program, it's just an email from the leader, was up from the prior year. For twenty-two, twenty-three, school year that just entered, Crawford County Hunger Fighters delivered eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-four food sacks to seven elementary schools within the county at a cost of forty thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Demand for the bulk food drive through program is held on the third Tuesday of each month, also remains strong for the last twelve months. Crawford County Hunger Fighters delivered over eighty-five thousand pounds of food to families consisting of three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three adults and two thousand, sixty-six children at a total cost of just under ten thousand dollars. The difference in the cost is that the type of food needed for the backpack program is not available at the food bank. It must be purchased locally, whereas the type of food needed for the food drive is available and can be purchased from the Sioux City Food Bank at U.S. government subsidized price. And once again, ninety-seven point three percent of every dollar received goes to that for which it is intended, and that's the purchase of food. And they are now entering their tenth year of doing this at Crawford County. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And so please, uh, what's that, Warner? Yeah, I do know him. Something, I guess, also, I, a couple weeks ago, I think Cindy Curroff was in and just said that if you have signed easement, that you may have trouble getting form liability insurance moving forward. And so I was just curious when I heard that, so I picked up the phone, and I contacted seven insurance carriers in the county, from Dennison to Sleswick to Manila, and not one of them said that that was, that they had heard that that was an issue from their providers. That they had heard that that was an issue from their providers moving forward. They're talking with Hoffman Agency here in town. They deal with five different. Providers of farm liability insurance and they said none of them have mentioned any of that to them. So.
Good to know.
Um, it was just something I think that, you know, when things come up, you need to be proactive and try to find out if there is. Um, any chance of that happening. I think there still could be. Maybe these insurance companies are just starting, um, to put this on their radar. But so far, the ones that I contacted, like I said, in Crawford County, it wasn't.
I don't know who RG is, but I know they've been, the summit folks have been monitoring.
Riley.
Is that Riley?
I think so.
Okay. He called me and said that they could come in and talk about that very subject, about how their liability and all this stuff. So I mean, I think that he'll probably be trying to get some, we didn't know if he could get there this week, but I suspect they'll be coming. And I think he'll probably bring, you know, a couple of ladies along.
Right.
You know, okay.
So just wanted to share that. That's all in.
Sounds good.
It's highly plausible as things move. More of this stuff starts coming down that they will highly look at some of that stuff, I would think.
At least increase your premiums. You know, I shouldn't say at least, but the possibility that minimum that they do that. Hard to tell.
I know mine still are my ability to go up anymore because of, I guess, a transmission line running through my car. Six one we have, I don't know which one's more dangerous still.
That's dangerous. So if you're raising popcorn and it fell over.
No, no meetings last week. Yes, center Friday, charity. Talking to Paul on how the new bridge is coming and. I had, I had, just from a distance, started working on forming the guardrails and I don't know if they're gonna get them board this week or what, but they're working on that. So. Coming along. So hopefully, if July would be a, very kind of get that open.
Hopefully.
I wish for well last Tuesday.
On the back.
I think it was Wednesday. Smoothed it down. Really, really efficient well done.
I think they said, no. That's true. I think they said they had to keep that wet for a week. Is that right?
Yeah, the cure time on that is, yeah, they wanna keep that wet. Two foot thick. You don't want curing too fast. So you wanna. Minimize the exothermic reaction.
Nice words.
Wow. Well, some say, and I don't, I don't know how to substantiate it, but Hoover Dam is still curing to this day.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Cool.
They actually had to run water lines in that concrete, recirculate water through Hoover Dam as there's no.
They also say Hoover Dam and how many people fall in while they're pouring the gas or false.
Well, they say that. They say that. They say that.
Get a lot of fat.
That's how OSHA came to be is that.
That's only when they have mob people helping.
Everybody was hungry. Yeah, they just come to accept some of that. A lot of people were willing to work, but they didn't have nothing else.
That's the Vegas base that's inside the dam.
You know, other than that, just a lot of talk amongst the rural community about hunger items.
I, I was on actually.
Getting to a point where it's desperately.
I agree.
How little rain the other day.
Are your, have all your beans germinated yet? No, I kinda wondered that.
There's some ugly bean fields out there.
Sir, I agree.
Hey, the weeds are like more prevalent.
They take that part of the genetics on the weed and put it into our bean corn plants. I'm gonna figure that out.
Uh, no, other than that, I just, HR one stores them still out on that. I just don't know. Cause it was kinda a point to us, uh, you can do that, but it takes participation to make it happen.
I understand.
We were gonna maybe get the participation that we want or need it to make it.
I, I.
The value that.
I, and I just, the only reason I bring it up is just so that we're all sure that we've decided to pass. You know, that we, our, our collectively that can, we wish we would do that and then, you know, have to come make another presentation.
Definitely got some good points to it. I really think, but I don't know, but if it's fifty-fifty good and bad right now in my eyes.
Oh, because of the outset, you have the other input, you mean?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you think we should have, Jack, or give the, the, uh, job descriptions just so that we could kind of look them over? So that we would realize all the duties that our employees have that we don't think, uh, know about? I don't know if that's.
I think the problem lies with, and I shouldn't say problem. That would help us employees that are directly underneath our authority. Now, a elected official. Maybe it helps them themselves, but we, I mean, it's been stated very clearly that we don't have control over. Very clearly. How Terry gives a raise in her office or Sherry or Colin or Sarah. I mean, it's, it's in their budget. It's their elected official.
The only thing we've got is oversight and then when we're, when we're establishing the original budget.
I've got some ideas about that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's good. I mean, and that'd be the only time it'd be advantageous to us, but if it isn't worth twenty-five thousand dollars for us.
Well, the very first thing that Paul said when he gave the presentation at ISAC is you have to have five.
Yeah, I remember that.
Department heads in the compensation board. It will do no good if you started off with people saying, well, I'm not gonna, you know.
If we, if we throw this among, trust this amongst our elected officials and tell them to participate, they're gonna be like, why are you pushing me in the corner?
Yeah, I know. So.
Not all of them. Some of them are really like, yes, I wanna participate. Exactly.
We can file this away if that's what we wanna do.
Felt the other day after the conversation, there was at least maybe a couple of them. No.
So they had a way is it physically responsible to spend the twenty, twenty-five thousand for potential?
Not at this point.
Data that we can't use.
I, 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 I question fiscal or, or I question why you would. Wouldn't want this if your department had it. To me, it would simplify, you know, your, your establishing pay.
Mm-hmm.
To me, however, you know, I don't like to have somebody living over my shoulder to go in there.
I feel that if I truly believe that my employees were underpaid. And you were willing to do a study so that I could prove to you that my people are paying, I would say, let's do it as long as you promise.
I think you established everything you're wanting to say right there.
Exactly. Sometimes people are fear, have fear of the unknown because.
They may be proven wrong, right?
We should have a question. We don't know what the findings will be, but I'm willing to, uh, at least then know if we need to step it up or slow it down.
With the CDL, I was thinking while you guys were talking, we need more room to do CDL. Does it have to be on a paved route or?
That was what we were asking earlier. We don't know the answer to that question.
Pay for rock at the fairground parking lot?
Oh, I don't know.
Cause that's a wide open space.
We always have some painted lines and stuff, so I don't know maintaining some painted.
Yeah.
You know, designated, the gravel might make that hard to do.
I'll go get Sherry and she.
So I don't know.
We'll have to get some information from Sherry to answer that question.
That's open like fifty weeks out of the year, basically. I mean, it's a nice big open space that has to be utilized.
Point.
Keep it.
I mean, on the weekend, sometimes Fridays it gets full with the horse horses.
Yep.
They can coordinate. Excellent point. Actually, it's a racetrack. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go take weekly at that point.
Make yourself tickets to watch Carroll Park semi.
There you go. That might be, I'd be interested too. Kyle, did you have anything else? Hey, you guys left me five minutes. Look at me rock this party. You know, I, I, my, my, my veteran, military and veteran affair committee. They had a speaker on that and he was, I, I think I kinda went over that with you. And but, uh, he was the army special, he was, he was a special operator in the army and they started this, they go around doing plays and stuff. Um, just some different stuff that they're trying to do to help vets. Their PTSD and stuff. And I just thought, gosh, you know, in Donna Reed's hometown, that'd be kinda cool to have something like that. You know, if that, if this guy could extend out to something like Madison like that. I mean, it might be something I dig into when I go down there in, in July. Just to sniff around with, on with the friends committee and get this guy's contact information. I don't know, I just thought it'd be kinda neat. You know, since this is one of our little claimant of fame is a little bit of acting or whatever. I just thought it'd be kinda neat. And, and the, the way they talked about this play that these guys are doing now, and it travels around the country. It sounds like it's quite the play. And it talks about their deployment, you know what I mean? It's the stuff that they go through and, and they say it's riveting. They say you go everything from, from a belly roll laugh. To tears running down your face during the play. So I mean, it must be pretty damn pretty moving.
Be fitting to have it in Donna Reed Theater.
Well, didn't you, actually you're, you're tracking me now. I just thought it'd be kinda cool to have that here. Maybe it'd spark something there, you know? Maybe some vets that you get, you know, we, we don't realize it, but there is more of that in our community than you realize. With guys who have PTSD and PTSD don't just come with veterans. I mean, Kyle's on the fire service. I mean. Uh, I, I, I still don't forget the morning of Mary's accident, you know, and things like that, you know, this. People like. If it's, if it still bothers you and eat, and yeah, when you drive by there, you still do this every day and think about it the rest of the way home. I mean. You know, that's PTSD. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I know you're really sarcastic there.
No, I just like, never thought of that.
Yeah. Oh, you weren't being sarcastic. Okay. Yeah, no, it, I mean, you, you, I, I'll tell you one of my biggest moments when I was in the army. Was actually down at the Grafenbeere train and there we came up upon a, where some Americans were heading to town. And they're, they were coming off base and, and they ran head on into a, a German family. Well, they were in an American car and the Germans cars are three flights, info plus, you know? And that pulled it up around their car and, and the guys laying, the guy that was driving the German car. Somebody had helped him get out before people getting on the scene. And I just came up, I was with my sergeant major. We were actually going down to re, put, do a re-enlist deal. And, and, uh, this guy's laying there and skull's cracked open and you're obviously looking at gray matter and what have you, you know, and. Actually got in an argument with the flight, when, when the, when medevac, army medevac landed, they're not gonna do anything with this German because, well, it's a German. We're not allowed to lie. I said, this guy's gonna die, you know? Our guy's got a couple of broken arms.
Right.
We gotta get on the radio and find out. And they actually did fly the guy. But I mean, to leave him there, I mean, just all those things, that's still, I, I had dreams about. But I mean, them, them are the kind of things you don't really think about from your medics, you know, or paramedics or firemen, you know? And just, that was something that just came up. I was thinking about all that as I was listening to this meeting. Anyway, uh. Uh. He, this guy said America is starving for people that are storytellers. You know, that's the best way to communicate past experiences is through the art of storytelling. You know, I mean, which, okay, I know I'm a storyteller. I'm getting on it as I, on it as I speak here, but, uh, you know, I just.
So you had a natural connection with this.
Yeah, this guy and I, we were smoking the same pipe, you know? Anyway, it was pretty good. And that was pretty much the whole thing is he was like me, ate up the whole meeting. So good for him. Anyway, uh, then I had, this last Friday was my Iowa Freight Advisory Council meeting and, uh. It's, uh, not really something that this board is, but I get so much information that's applicable to us when I go into that meeting. And, uh. First thing, I'm just gonna run through this quick. Uh, to run a nurse tank now, they're gonna make that a class A CDL. You know, like the nurse tanks from the elevator just.
You mean like the pickup they pull the pickup?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Yeah. So once again, there's a reason to be able to test these. Let's see, five twenty seven county on output, uh. The overweight, they tried to give me, I, I, I pinned him down on the overweight. The DOT was awful nervous. Was kinda pounding him on the ice. From figuring out this press, ground pressure on the, on the roadways. I said, what formula did you establish that this would be safe along? In the spring or a little more than hundred. Because we're floating on top of the, whatever's falling underneath. And I says, we're gonna have roads in trouble. And I, and I thought about our argument, our embargo, and I thought, uh, I'm already get this guy nervous because I'm, I'm questioning things and he. Whole formula that was already in place, in place from the governor for the two-month thing. During the dry time of the year. Your formula then, what your formula was, if you're, what it was then, if that's what you're using now.
You're correct.
You also, that's right. So I, I really was pushing on that, you know, probably should have been pushing on that before the damn thing passed, but, uh. But I'm, I'm, I'm worried about our roads and, and, you know, and I told him, I said, listen, I'm a trucker. I, I got ninety-six thousand pound outfits, but I got tires on the ground. Said Wilson trailers help to define what. And the bridges and the ten-one spreads on your trucks and trailers, you know, all these things that, that we do to be safe. Breaking and not tearing up, uh, over affecting them with ground pressure. And I said, you know.
When you're seven, safe.
Safe.
There's no safety in any of that consideration. You know, the same axles. There's no, it's gonna do a safety.
And, and I'm for moving a commodity. And I think we can't, the tires on the ground. You up to Michigan, my God, they got. You know, I mean, so, you know, we can do safe and efficient.
Or was breaking, like Kyle just said, was breaking a part of the conversation?
Yeah, so nobody, nobody gave me a good answer.
Very good.
Right, so.
So there you go. So anyway, that was, that, that was the part point. Get back to the Department of Transportation. I don't know. Hazmat preparedness grants. Kyle, this is kind of an EMA thing. See if you're kinda, uh, there's train, training money out there. I'm into Paul's time. Paul, you know. Okay. Well, there's, there's hazmat preparedness monies that are. For planning and training. Remember how we used to have, uh, what was it? DePaul came in, uh, wanted to pay for that? Maybe we need like that for our EMA county fire department. Do we still have county fire department or?
I believe at some level.
But it isn't like what we used to have. It's so expensive to train people to hazmat tech. Pass we got, you know, anyway, that's something we need to look at. I'm gonna talk to Greg. Yeah, I think I'm gonna talk to Greg about it, you know? Use your memory banks with all still going on.
If there's money available, it'd be good to start something.
Uh, especially with, we can, I mean, probably, you know, I'm sure our. People in the railroad, we can probably get some help and through both of them facilities for that type of.
A county on a daily basis.
Oh, on that railroad. And they, and, and actually there was a, a pretty good discussion about getting, uh. From the railroad to what's on every train, which you think about how hard that would be to get from our trucking companies. Like you don't really drive them through your county in a day's time.
That information left out.
They acted like they, they were pretty, they acted different. I, because there's railroad people sit in this meeting and they actually said, you can get that. Some of them are wanting to know why you're wanting that, but you know, if you're doing it for training purposes, we wanna know what kind of special things we need to be trained on or whatever. So hopefully we don't haul any hydrazine through the county. That'd scare the heck out of me. Local, uh, emergency planning committee. Um, hazmat teams. Okay, I'm gonna cut it off, Paul, if you wanna come up here.
Sure.
Otherwise I'll start off on something else and I won't be here for a month. They look frozen? No, they're just moving.
We are, are, yeah, us.
Oh, that was a long time ago.
patiently waiting to be called up.
Senator Schultz is back here. I didn't realize that he was in the weather. So I, I think, you know, your point's well taken, Ty, about the twelve percent, you know, that the all systems overweight permit, you know, the. And I, I shared with you my, my thoughts. You know, the problem is, is we're never invited to the table. These things are just, and they're forced upon us, which is unfortunate. You know, because I like to think that we're reasonable, but we don't even get a chance. We, we don't even know about these things until it happens. You know, because as you look at it, and you guys brought up good points. There's a safety concern as far as those trucks, you know, their braking ability and, you know, that, those types of things. But in addition to that. In the spring of the year, that, that, that's when the real problems are. Proclamation and, and the difference between the proclamation and, and what, what just happened is that the proclamation. Through to hauling grain in a five axle zone. Okay. And it was, it was allowing those to go up to ninety thousand pounds.
And it's a limited number of vehicles in that regard.
Exactly. And it is in the fall of the year. The problem with this twelve percent overload, uh, all year long. Is that you're, you're now about every truck. The special haul, the, uh, the SUVs, which is, you know, six to seven axle dump trucks. All year long. Really knew about that. And perhaps they did, they just ignored it because I know all of the legislators voted in favor of it. But they never asked us, they never asked these people, the local. To have to spend the money to take care of this road. And that's unfortunate. It is. So, because what's going to happen, what's going to happen with roads? Is they're going to slow deteriorate.
Hopefully slowly.
Well, they will.
I'm, I'm saying hopefully it ends fast.
At a faster rate than they would have, you know, and, and so. Also say that, well, you know, they have to pay a five hundred dollar fee. In order to get this license. I mean, the five hundred dollar fee collectively is insignificant. It, it really is. And so.
Miss any others?
You know, we continue to see overload or heavier weight creep throughout the state. Care takers of the road are never allowed. Never allowed. And then we have to do with passports. Same thing happened with special haul vehicles, which are, which we discussed, we weren't in favor of that. Now we have twelve percent overload on every truck all year long with the. Five hundred times, let's say that there's three thousand. Okay. What does that generate? Across the state of Iowa. You know, so the point is, is that we're all taxpayers, and I don't think we're whiners. Uh, I think we're trying to be pragmatic, realistic. And so what you're going to see is a gradual, if, if this continues to base off. And you get these heavier weights, especially in the spring of the year. You'll see significant deterioration, but it'll be kind of slow, perhaps slow and imperceptible to casual observers, but we'll see it. You don't have a system that just all suddenly.
Crumbles.
And then you wonder why we have a better job.
And Iowa's already notorious in the nation for having roads that are rougher.
Yeah.
You go down and run across Kansas or something who also deal with frost effect. Effects.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that their roads are.
Yeah. I don't think anyone sitting at this table was in favor of it. I know, I know the people in the ag community, which are the users of the road primarily out there. They weren't necessarily in favor of it. They probably followed on the coattails of whoever was promoting it, but. In rural, rural Iowa, the area that you represent, I don't think supported that.
Thing was they, they, they liked the proclamation, satisfied with that.
Yeah.
They don't want to run any faster than.
Absolutely, Kyle. I think they were, I think they were, they, they were okay with that. So this did nothing to move the needle out here in rural Iowa.
Uh, you know, and I'll, 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 while you're speaking about it, I'll reen, I'll reinforce the part that I've said the whole time. Is tires on the ground and act. Did that, I'd have been okay with everything because you took care of everything then. Just keep, we, we know what the eighty thousand pound truck with five axles. And, and, and dualled out, obviously single, single tire on the steer axle. But we know what the ground pressure is of that and we know what the effects, there's a long term study of the. Airways with that, all across the nation.